I'm going to call us to order the BUHS number six board meeting for Monday, November 7th. It is seven o'clock exactly, so call us to order. And first we'll start with the clerks' report and the approval of the minutes. And I'm assuming everybody got those through email. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any additions, deletions, corrections, changes to those minutes? For anybody? All right, all those in favor, signal however you're saying aye.
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 All right. And also under clerks' report, communications. Are there any other communications from anybody, that anybody's received? I don't see any, okay. So, and there's no groups or individual visitors here, so let's... Is there a motion to go into consent agenda?
So moved.
All right, you guys thumb wrestle for it.
Well, I'll get it.
All right.
Who gets to second?
I'll second.
All right. So let's start with finance, building, and transportation.
Okay, finance committee met on October 27th. And we approved board numbers 1059, 1060, 1061, 1062, 1064, 1065, and 1066. The amount of $332,206.23. We also talked about the TOOLCAT. Do you want to say something about the TOOLCAT, Bob?
The TOOLCAT is a piece of equipment that is, has been on our radar for replacement for a while in the capital plan. And it's originally was scheduled for next year's budget. There has been a significant amount of repair necessary for that unit. It's widely used for a lot of different things, has a lot of attachments, very versatile vehicle. So the request was made to move, move the purchase up a little bit. And it would be, it would come from our capital funds. So it's not, doesn't have any impact on our expense budget. But we would just move it up to this year instead of last year. And we get a trade-in on the TOOLCAT. It's about, it's about a $32,000 piece of equipment. But it was felt by pretty much everybody on the committee that it was best to go ahead and do it now. Otherwise, we're going to be doing it shortly into next year, and there's going to be a fair amount of repair in between. So we approved the purchase, and it was awarded to the low bidder, which was a Vermont firm. This is a fairly specialized piece of equipment, so you don't have it at every dealer on, you know, around the corner.
And are you saying TOOL, like T-O-O-L?
T-O-O-L, CAT.
K-C-A-T.
Yeah. I mean, this, a couple of examples of what this does. I mean, it hauls a lot of things, has a forklift attachment you can put on. So it's, and it gets a lot of use around campus here.
All right. Anything else for finance, building, and transportation?
We also had a further discussion about the Whitestone. And I think we're going to, that's going to continue again until, I think something will happen. We don't know exactly when it'll be, but we'll definitely keep the board informed as we go over to that.
Great.
We also spent a little bit of time, as you, as you may remember, we had a potential solar project that kind of went, went south and didn't come to fruition. But there's another one on the horizon, Wyndham Solid Waste District Solar Project Proposal. And we've been invited to consider that. We authorized Frank to proceed with preliminary contract negotiations with Encore Renewable Energy. And this will be brought to the full board at a future date. But we authorized Frank to do some investigating. And then the other, last item is the FY '18 budget timeline and development process. That time has arrived. We've kind of switched this year a little bit from the evening meetings, a lot actually, because all our meetings are scheduled in the morning. The first one is this Thursday, we'll have a regular finance meeting, but we'll also will discuss the capital plan. A week from Thursday, we'll have a budget meeting. And then the 21st and the 28th will also be all at eight o'clock in the morning at Central Office.
Mr. Perry looks puzzled. Is that it?
Yes, I think that's it.
All right. WSCSU Finance?
So I believe that our SU Finance in the full board meeting where we voted to hire a new superintendent took place since our last meeting. That was on October 26th. It was a rather long meeting, it was well over five hours, I think. And there was no food. I don't know what happened with the food, so blood sugar was diving. There was a lot of discussion from the public, from members of the board. We were in the executive session, met with the candidate, and then there was more discussion afterwards. And the full SU board then approved the hiring of Lyle Holiday, our next superintendent. I believe the vote was 13 to 5. So, you know, there were a lot of, you know, decisions that we made along the way. In my own view, the easiest one was, was the judgment of Golling Fly. She really performed well in the interviews and in all the focus groups. There were, in fact, I'd just like to thank again, you know, all the boards, the six boards efforts in it, and then the, I believe there's 35 people that were in all the focus groups that came to this other meetings. And look forward to July 1st, welcoming Lyle as our, of course, we haven't finished negotiations, but presumably that goes well, welcoming to the superintendent position for the SU, or whatever it is that we end up calling the good for WSCSU. Finance Committee does have a meeting this Wednesday at 5:00 at Oak Grove. I think it's before, it's another Act 46 meeting at 6:00, I think. And so we'll be meeting then, we'll be starting the budget process. And then the next meeting is scheduled for the 16th. I'm not going to be able to make it, but we may move that, that one around. But we've got a schedule to go through the budget. After this meeting, the next one is going to be with special ed, the special ed budget.
Great. And that is it. Thank you. Planning and policy?
Has not met.
We do have policies up for adoption. Whole business.
Teacher curriculum committee?
Has not met.
BAMS committee?
Has not met.
WRCC?
Has not met.
The regional advisory board meeting is tomorrow, though, at 11:30.
And that's open to just advisory board members or any board members?
Generally, but I don't think we've ever turned away a member, the school board member that wanted to come and check it out.
Great.
If you talk to the chairman of that particular board, he'd probably give you a personal invite.
Maybe, we'll see. All right. And then WSCSU Act 46 study committee?
I don't believe we've had a meeting since the last meeting.
No, there wasn't a meeting.
It wasn't?
On Thursday.
Yeah.
But it was sparsely attended, I guess.
Oh, well, that was a forum, not a...
No, no, it was a meeting.
Regular meeting.
I tried to make it, but the roads were too bad.
Yeah, and I was coming back from a conference.
I was thinking that one was before our last meeting.
No. Oh, no.
Okay, yeah, so we did have, we did have...
It was during the snowstorm.
We did have a meeting, like you said, it was very sparsely attended due to the snowstorm. We put off any further decision-making on the, yeah, plan. The two, the two models.
Oh, the size of the board?
Yeah.
Make them with the board?
Because we did not have many people there. We had a forum, but very...
My bless.
And they're meeting again this Wednes, Act 46 meeting this Wednesday at 6:00 at Oak Grove.
Yep. Anything else for consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
So moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ruth, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Okay. All right, let's move to administrative reports. Let's start down with Mr. Lang, BAMS.
Hi, everyone. Hello. Let's see. So I just hired a paraprofessional. We had, took a while to, we had a late resignation. It was a time when we thought we might not need to replace that para, but we definitely did. Hired Sheila Kachuk, who's from Guilford, and glad to have her onboard. She started on Friday. Special ed paraprofessional. See, last week, we went up to Dover School. Dover has this, almost like a fair-style setup once a year. And the local schools, you see these six to eight of them there, set up little tables and kind of try to promote their schools. And then Dover invites their fourth, fifth, and sixth graders' families to come and kind of see what all the different schools have to offer. And had Charlie Vickery and Miles Anton, both BAMS students from Dover, come up and kind of promote the school. That went really great, and we've had a pretty good trend of Dover students coming to BAMS. So trying to keep that going. There was a lot of competition. We had our first dance on Friday night, and it's always fun times, kids are great, and well-attended, and so those are always a long day, but the kids have, kids have a lot of fun, so. Tomorrow morning is our first set of student-led conferences. And so this is a big shift for us. We have some slots set up during, before school hours. And then we start Wednesday afternoon, all the way through to 7:00 PM, with tons of parents and students coming in for conferences, and the same thing Thursday afternoon. And teachers stay till 7:00. We have a little dinner break set up for them in the NPR. Looking forward to this shift, without going into details, since the students have been preparing a presentation, they'll, they'll kind of be the center point of the conference. And they'll sit and present to their parents with a couple of teachers there, their advisor, and, and they go through goals that they've set for themselves academically, areas that they're proud of, and things that they've done well this year, and areas that they want to improve upon, showing off some of their best work, and, and that kind of stuff. And they've been really working hard, as well as the teachers. We spent months preparing for this. And it's, and I've read a lot of research and articles on it, that there will be some parents that don't like the shift, and that's pretty much always the case. But we stand by this change, and we hope to learn from the first round and make adjustments as necessary. But so far, are pretty happy with the effort the kids have put into preparing them. Tomorrow night is our fall concert. We pushed the start time back to 7:30 because of the election. Probably if I was to do it again, we'd try to find a different date, but they set the date a long, long time ago, and I guess that was an oversight. But those students have been working hard, it'll be Riley Goodmoat's first concert, so looking forward to that. And first for us, here in this district, for a little while, I think Veterans Day is off for the teachers on Friday. That was a shift that the board had made a year, year ago or so, when we looked at calendar. Usually the teachers work on Veterans Day, and this year, everybody's off, so I think it's a good change. And that's it, unless there's any questions? All right.
All right, Mr. Perry?
Guess I'm back. So on the 28th, we celebrated our Fall Diversity Day, and Michaela Sims, our coordinator, did a great job of organizing a wide variety of topics, you know, everything from local, things of local interest, all the way up to Dakota pipelines and other global issues. It was great. We closed the day out with a group of Senegalese dancers, who brought authentic instruments and played those. And it was kind of a neat thing to see several of our students and teachers dancing on the stage. And it's kind of a neat mix of reggae, African rhythms, it was kind of engaging, so. As you remarked earlier, our budget is in full swing. We're just about finishing up collecting budget data from departments. And, you know, so far, I can say as usual, departments have been very responsible. They've done a nice job of, of understanding that we need to balance quality education with cost, and they're doing a nice job of that. We're also working on a program of studies. And we're actually going to have a few changes this year to our program of studies. We find that the vast majority of those end up in a dumpster, and they're not read very often. So we're actually developing a ninth-grade-only version of it, that's a little less intimidating, a little bit more accessible. And we're going to take that to eighth-grade schools, and actually, we took to Marlboro last week. And that just talks about and demonstrates the courses available in the ninth graders. We make reference to the other program of studies, but we're trying to make it so you're not looking at this huge thing with all of these English courses. We balance that with the idea that we also want students to look through the program of studies and get excited about other courses. So we will still have the big book. Freshmen will still get that, but right now, we're trying to kind of help them not get overwhelmed the first time they see stuff from the high school. We're also going to make a bigger move to put most of the program of studies online. It's a considerable expense, and as I said before, they don't get read all that often. And so we're really trying to figure out what the balance is. You know, as a, as a parent of a high schooler myself, I can't understate the value of holding that book in your hand and sitting down with your child and looking at it. You know, maybe it's just of my age, but I feel like that visceral thing, sitting down with your child, looking through those pages, does have some benefit. So we're trying to preserve that. In congratulatory news, both the Boys and Girls Cross Country teams won the Marble Valley League. It's a huge accomplishment. And I have to give a special shout-out to Isaac Freitas Egan, who apparently just wins every race he shows up to. He's having a great season. He's running really strong. They will be representing us at New England's next, and I want to congratulate both the Boys and the Girls Cross Country for that great accomplishment. Last week, we also inducted 14 new students into the National Honor Society. And those students have worked hard to demonstrate their integrity, their academics, their community service. Those students are Colette Anton, Freeja Cappy-Goldfarb, Anya Gunsberg, Sam Stevens, Ben Kaufman, Galen Von Watke, Jessica Lawrence, Kelsey McCough, Tanner Bell, Gabrielle Watson, Seth Rhodes, Matt Delmain, Kelsey Rabideau, and Jocelyn Athier. So I want to congratulate those students and their families on that, on that accomplishment. While BAMS and the elementary school are doing conferences Thursday, Wednesday and Thursday, we'll be doing some in-service. And as the board knows, we're deep in the middle of this transition to a proficiency-based model, and so lots to talk about. So we're going to spend those two afternoons kind of rotating through different, different sessions to kind of get input and discuss some options. One of the things we're going to talk about is in proficiency-based model, what does an accommodation look like? And how does, if you have a benchmark, if you have a proficiency standard, content standard, how do you modify or accommodate a student with a different learning style? And how do you work with a student who is looking for the flexible pathway approach? Another one of our sessions, we're going to highlight the work of Tara Cludier and Michelle Babb, our math teachers. They've done incredible work, and I'm going to actually have them come to TCC and show this as well. They've done incredible work helping students chart their progress through rubrics visually. And so a student, well, as they're working through a unit, will get some old-style paper feedback that has the rubric, and shows which skills, which content they mastered. And the students can actually look at that. And it's shifting the conversation away from, you know, what'd you get, what's your grade, more to, did you get that content? Did you get, did you understand that skill? Which is a nice change to see, because we want to kind of move towards the idea where we value the content and the skill, not just that final number. We're going to do some work on Google Extensions as well. This is something that we get as part of our work with, with Google Apps as our email suite. And it's got a whole array of readability apps and things like that, that a teacher can actually use. And so if you have a student who's a struggling reader, and you don't want to necessarily highlight that in front of the class, they can actually choose a pace, go to a webpage or a document, and that document will scroll at a speed that the student sets. So rather than them being confronted with a huge page of text, it really just kind of helps the student pace their reading and kind of look at what they're doing. It does pronunciations for them as well if they have difficulty. Those are great tools. They used to cost us a lot of money, and now they're, you know, they're part of Google Extensions, which is nice. And finally, the last session is going to work with, how do we move from our current academic 0 through 100 scale, which by the way, only 60 through 100 is passing, to a more authentic four-point scale? What does that rollout look like? How do we communicate that with various stakeholders? Around the state, different schools have done a lot of different models for how they're exploring different ways to, to move away from a single grade report. And so one of our conversations over those two days will be, what does that look like? And hopefully, once we finish that, I'll bring what we're working on to the board in more detail, so. You know, it's, it's pretty heady stuff, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of tension, a lot of nervousness, because, you know, for many of us, for all of us, we're looking at a system of assessment and evaluation that we've done our entire lives, and we're claiming that in question. And we're trying to look at new things. So, you know, we're taking that in steps, but we are beginning to make some progress, so. Other than that, nothing's happened.
Question? Okay. Excellent. And you don't have anything in the central office, do you?
I do not.
Okay. And WRCC's not here tonight, Student Council's not, and I don't have anything. So let's move to unfinished business. And we have some policies up for adoption. And I'll turn it over to Ian.
We have four, in fact. We've been over these multiple times. Everybody should have gotten clean copies sent out via email with all the revisions we've made. So I'll just go right through them. I move that the board adopt policy A1, the role of policy as presented.
Second.
Any questions, concerns, comments, conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstention? All right. It passes.
I move that we adopt policy D2, professional development as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded? Yes.
I just read through those policies tonight, and I just had a brief conversation before the meeting started with Ian about it. But it says on the first page of the implementation supplement is the heading, that says, "Paragraph 30, recommended to the school board, needs-based professional development and yearly calendar from the superintendent." And I don't remember ever actually having that happen. And then further on, it says, "The superintendent will sort of assure that there'll be adequate financial resources and time for education to participate in appropriate professional development experiences." So I think there's something in the policy that has never happened. So, I don't know, do you have that in front of you?
Yeah, I have the, I have the clean policy, probably.
Yeah.
Could you read that first part of that again?
Yeah, it says, let's see here, after consolidation, this is a little bit, I'll read more than is germane here, but I'll read the whole paragraph. "After consolidation, consultation with the professional development and action planning committees, the superintendent will recommend to the school board a needs-based professional development plan and yearly calendar." I don't remember ever having that.
Was that proposed in new language?
I don't think so.
I mean, I've got it, I've got it highlighted online in bold, which signifies new language.
Ah, so you have, you have a previous topic. We only have the clean copy here, so it must be new language.
So I think...
So that's why it's never happened before. It's something that's just been...
Oh, so it's going to be a change. So superintendent, and then the next sentence, "The superintendent will make recommendations to ensure adequate financial resources and time for educators to participate in appropriate professional development experience."
Yeah, the old language is superintendent shall design or implement a yearly calendar for professional activities, period. So the, bringing, recommending it to the school board.
So you've never actually had to present that to us?
So now it will come to the board and...
Presumably, it will be coming before us now, because it's something that's in the policy that will have to be done.
And as budget, period. Okay.
Perfect. Assuming we approve the...
Assuming we approve the policy.
That's all I have.
Is that, right? Any other questions or comments on D2? Yeah.
So that, just so the board knows, that document does exist. And so every year, the curriculum directors at Central Office do come out with a professional development plan and calendar.
Yeah, and then the old policy, I have to flip back, because I had a copy of the old policy as well, a paper in my binder, and it just said that there would, it would be designed and implemented, the calendar would happen. It just, but the new language is that it's, it'd be presented to the school board. So, okay. So it's, will be an easy shift, that, relatively speaking.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions, comments on D2? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? None? Okay. Pass D2.
I move the board adopt policy D12, policy on the prevention of harassment of employees as presented.
Second.
All right. Any questions, comments, discussion on that one? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay. All right. Pass D12.
I move the board adopt policy G7, educational support system as presented.
Second.
All right. Any questions, comments, concerns on that one? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? None? All right. Pass G7.
That's it?
That's it? And is there another round chopping at your...
I haven't, I haven't seen the packet yet. We'll see what comes after these, good.
So, okay. All right. Any other unfinished business tonight? Yes, Sean?
Oh, new business.
Okay. No, no, the unfinished business? All right. So new business. Sean?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that this board, BUHS, district six, request that the administration and Central Office give a report on goals and outcomes of the China trip spring 2016.
Goals are now come to the plat?
I'm sorry?
I got the motion, this board request from the administration...
Oh, that the administration and Central Office give a report on the goals and outcomes of the China trip.
Oh, the China trip.
Uh, in spring 2016.
Second, for discussion. All right. So you want to share?
Well, actually, when the administration and some of the Central Office staff returned from that, there was a request at the board level to have a report. And subsequently, I've asked the superintendent if that would be a possibility, and it was, it was not. So I was given information about the China trip, but I sort of feel like it was never, it was never actually brought up into a public realm where all the ramifications of the trip, financial ramifications, goals, and outcomes... where all the ramifications of the trip, uh, financial ramifications, goals, and outcomes, um, could ever be discussed. So I thought, if the board, if I have made a request, if the motion passed, uh, then we would, we would have the presentation.
Any other questions, can I?
I'll second that motion.
Well, Bob already did.
Did you second it?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
Can't hear anything, Bob.
All right. Any other questions or...
Is the usual procedure to do that or just for the chair to schedule that on as an agenda item? So I don't know if it's...
I will, I can, I, I can add it to an agenda item and I will contact Ron. I made myself a note to contact Ron.
Yeah, so I'm, I don't know if it was appropriate or not.
Well, yeah, that's true. The reason that I did that is that I made a personal request, uh, both to Steve and to Ron, and it went nowhere. So I thought, wow, you know, I've never made a motion like that. I've never heard a motion like that made, but I thought, why not make a motion in under new business, um, just to give the opportunity for the board to vote on whether they think it's appropriate or not.
Any other thoughts?
Should we, uh, perhaps table your formal motion to see how simply adding it to a future agenda and figuring this do it without that, so?
Sure.
It is within the chair's realm to, to assign topics.
Right. I can speak to some of it right now.
Okay.
Or, I, I don't know. I mean, do you want to go?
Well, I mean, we could, we could do it two ways. And my, my first thought when I heard Sean's motion was just, uh, this would be a good board education thing. So if there's like an actual presentation, we could just schedule it for as a, as a board education piece, as a presentation one night for a regular meeting.
I think that would be my preference, having made the motion, that if we went forward and actually had a, a formal presentation, so we, you know, had the whole itinerary, uh, with the goals and with the outcomes.
Like I said, I made myself a little note to just contact Ron to have...
So maybe I would, I would ask, um, you know, uh, costs. I know that, um, some of the money for the trip actually came from professional development, which the, was the policy that we just passed. So, um, I read through the professional develop- development policy and it didn't, it didn't, you know, jump right out at me. If you want, you know, if you wanted to try that, then this can be, the monies from that professional development can be used for that. And it, it didn't seem applicable to me, um, but maybe it is. I mean, there are lots of things I don't have a clue about.
So what do we work on? If you're okay with going with Ian's suggestion? We'll table your, your motion. Won't act on that. I'll make a request of Steve and Ron to put together a presentation for a future meeting. And we'll have a, an actual presentation as part of board education about the entirety of the China trip. I think Steve being here got some notes about that as well, about what, what you were, what you're specifically looking for, but I think what all of us would like to see. And we can go, and we can just schedule it for a future meeting. Okay? Sounds great? All right. I also had a new business item, if nobody else has anything else under new business. And I realized earlier today, and I was looking at the calendar, that our next meeting this month would fall on a no-school day. It's a teacher in-service day on the twenty-first. It's the week of Thanksgiving. And I don't know if that, one, from administration, if that's a problematic thing related to having administration be here. And two, wanted to get a sense of the board about whether or not we needed to either reschedule or to, to not have that meeting based on the holiday week and things like that. Yes, Bob?
Well, I would suggest unless there's some cogent information, it has to be considered that we have a significant number of committee meetings, budget meetings going on this month. And work is, a lot of work will be, being done through committee. And I wouldn't think we would absolutely need a second board meeting. But if there's, there's no policies we have to finish off, there's, are there any other, um...
I have that, I have that day listed as the day of the BUHS and District-wide budget presentation to the board.
Yes.
That day at five o'clock, here.
Oh. I, I don't think it was a present- that's the budget committee.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right, I, I, yeah, well, we meet with the budget committee on that night.
Yeah.
I, I have it.
Or budget morning.
That's at eight o'clock in the morning.
At eight o'clock in the morning.
Okay. Can I? We had them on, what the administrators got said they were all at five PM here.
Oh.
But they're all at eight AM, okay.
I think we changed that at our last finance meeting. Maybe that wasn't...
Maybe that was from before, yeah. My understanding was they're all at eight AM.
That was my understanding as well.
So lucky that came up, because we can discuss that at...
It's a little tricky if we're running an in-service.
Yeah.
On that, on that day, yeah. That would be...
Which particular topic of budget was...
That was BUHS and District-wide. I mean, I can, I can be here at eight o'clock.
It's at central office, sure.
I can be there at eight o'clock.
Bob, is it on our timeline somewhere?
I think I have my finance stuff here. I just wrote it all down in my book.
Yeah, I don't know that that was on any piece of paper.
Yeah, there was a, there was a whole, um, timeline for everything.
It just says, uh, oh, maybe, oh, here it is. Here it is, right here. Here it is.
I don't see the BUHS. It's District-level budget.
Yeah. Right here. But it doesn't give a time of day.
It does at the bottom, Earth, if you scroll down.
Scroll down, okay.
Yeah, I, I, I'm scrolling. I'm scrolling and it's not working.
You get the wrong kind of paper there.
If I scroll down like this, will it work?
As I scroll, as I, as I scroll down, um, it lists, it says all of them are at five PM, but...
Well, but that, doesn't that come from before our last finance meeting?
This is as of ten twenty-five?
Ten twenty-seven, ten twenty-six.
Yeah, thi- this one says ten twenty-six.
All right. Well, it'd be good for every, all the administrators to know that.
We'll have to talk about this on Thursday.
Yeah, we can clarify that on Thursday. Not April, that's Frank's, uh, between the...
Yeah, we met on the twenty-seventh, so, and that was when, when it was suggested by Frank to us that we meet in the morning. And we all enthusiastically agreed.
We, we were all gleeful.
Okay. So fin- fin- finance and administration will figure out when they're meeting. They have the dates, just when they're meeting for talk about different things. So Ruth, did you have something around my original question about the twenty-first?
Yeah, I was just going to say that that was the same day as the budget meeting. And then I remembered that the budget meeting was at eight o'clock in the morning instead of five in the afternoon. So it really wouldn't impact one way or the other. But, um, no, we don't have to meet by all means.
So, anybody else, Ian?
I, uh, in my business, I absolutely cannot commit to a meeting on, uh, Thanksgiving. So if you meet, I may be here, I may not.
Well, how about, how about, since I'm seeing there are no burning issues that are coming before us, how about we not have a meeting unless something in the next two weeks or, but just under two weeks comes up that's major that we'd have to meet, and then we will schedule it accordingly. But we'll, right now, we'll plan on not meeting on the twenty-first. So our next meeting would be the first Monday in December, which I just wanted...
Which is the fifth.
Which is the fifth of December. So our, our next meeting, scheduled meeting for the whole board would be on Monday, the fifth, at seven o'clock. Is that good for everybody? Unless something comes up? Okay? All right.
And Steve, for that December meeting, do we want to schedule a TCC to meet with more teachers?
Sure.
Okay. So there'll be a TCC before. And you'll just let Barb know about that so that she has that for the agenda. All right? Anything else under new business for our meeting tonight?
Hearing none, I move to adjourn.
Seconded. All right, seconded by Ruth. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.